We're going to start with two-minute opening statements. And I'm going to call on Tom Kowal to go first.
I'm running because what we have here in our schools is, I think, something incredible. I think our schools are our best asset, full of great teachers, good administrators, an incredible parent support network that keeps our schools afloat. We have an 85% in-capture rate. Most businesses would die for that. We're nestled in with incredible universities around us. We have an incredible library system. In Moonee County. And our kids are future. We're carrying on them. And I think that we can, I think that we're doing some incredible things. This school here, Franklin, is an example of that. If we could clone what is happening here and take it to the rest of the district, we'd be really doing some wonderful things. And I think you could say that about every school here in the district. There are pockets of things that are absolutely incredible that we want to replicate. So my interest is making us have the New York Times write about us in the paper, our schools, instead of our chicken coops. I think we can get there. I think that we've got incredible things to work with. And I'm looking forward to working hard to help move along with the health of everybody in this market. Thank you.
Martine, two minutes. Opening statement.
First, I'd like to thank the PTA Franklin and Cleveland for hosting this and Roger for keeping on me to accept the invitation. There was, as always, there's conflicts in regards to different things, but I felt it was important to recognize the effort that was being done by the school committee this year. And also, another thing to attempt to come back at Franklin. I was happy, honor, or been here last year as a person about due from the board to speak at the graduation for Franklin. And it was one of the...
I think if there's a reward for school board members to actually, you know, speak at those graduations, to attend those graduations, because it is the culmination of all the hard work that our staff and our students have done alongside with the parents and the community to make sure that they reached, you know, their final goal in terms of graduation from our institutions. And it was also great for me, because it was also coming back to the southeast after years of work here as the executive director of the Portland Schools Alliance. I had the benefit of working with parents from the Marshall Cluster in particular. They were, among them, you know, Alfredo, that is here in the audience. They were organizing to press the school district to implement changes in programs, dual-language immersion programs, as an intervention strategy to close the achievement gap. It happened that at the Franklin graduation was Saul from El Pato Feliz, and his son was graduating. And Saul was one of those parents that was part of that and supported those organizing efforts. So for me, to be able to come back full circle and see some of the work and some of the efforts of those parents, it was a great opportunity, along with those students that graduated that day.
Thank you. David?
This is an opportunity that I'm happy to have, that I would not have had unless I had signed up to run for office. My first and primary concern is the health and safety of our children and teachers. According to the World Health Organization, our schools may not be safe, because in 2011, the World Health Organization classified Wi-Fi radiation as a Class IIb carcinogen, as toxic as lead and DDT. Some of the adverse health effects that have been repeatedly documented are permanent DNA damage, increased risk of cancer, heart, and circulatory problems, weakening of the blood-brain barrier, insomnia, thyroid disruption, neurological and behavioral problems, and decreased cognitive function. At least 12 studies have now confirmed damage to sperm from using the Wi-Fi on your lap. Wi-Fi systems in schools are typically hundreds of times more powerful than home consumer systems. They're more powerful than any microwave communication systems in any other setting, because they were required to run hundreds of computers simultaneously. They're exposing children for many hours each day throughout their childhoods, about 25,000 hours by the time they finish exposure to low-level microwave radiation by the time they finish high school. They're much more vulnerable to these toxins than adults. This is an unprecedented experiment using our children as lab rats. Over 60 international organizations support the campaign to get Wi-Fi out of schools. Among them are the Los Angeles Teachers Union, British Teachers Union, the Ontario Catholic Teachers Union, the American Association of Pediatric Physicians, and the Council of Europe. Dr. Martha Herbert, a pediatric neurologist at the Harvard Medical School, says it's urgent that we get Wi-Fi out of schools to prevent a potential public health disaster. The National Education Association believes that all educational facilities must be free from hazardous electromagnetic fields. If elected, I will request that the board replace Wi-Fi...
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. You're out of time. Steve?
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. It's really nice to see, this is a pretty good turnout, it doesn't look so big here in the gym, but it's a nice turnout. And thank you to the Cleveland and Franklin PTAs for putting this on. There's nothing more important, probably, that we do as a public body than educate our children. And I've had 40 years as a school teacher, including 10 teaching in Portland. I was on the Portland School Board years ago. We had some pretty turbulent times, 1979 to '83. And I'm the founder of an organization called Oregon Save Our Schools, which works tirelessly for the education of your children and everybody's children in Oregon. There's three jobs that the school board does. And the first is they hire and supervise the superintendent. And they did pretty, I liked the superintendent, very nice woman, I think she does a lot of good things. Second thing they do is try to make the schools run smoothly. And we're kind of edgy there. Some of the schools run pretty well, some don't run very well. And so we've got some work there. But the third thing that they do is to act as legislators. They're supposed to bring things from the community, which makes sense to help the schools, and bring things into the board, make motions, bring things from themselves. That's how the whole school board is set up. We're actually elected representatives of the people. And so we actually act as legislators. And that's where the school board is just, there's like a void there. Nothing seems to be coming out of the community. It's so difficult even to go and talk to them. Have you been down there for two minutes? They give you two minutes, and that's it? There's no exchange, no dialogue, there's no one that asks you a question? There's no one that says, "Well, why don't you come back later, and we'll talk about this some more?" There's no dialogue. And so the community, we've kind of cut the community out. And I don't think that's a good thing in this city.
Thank you, Steve. First question is, how should the superintendent, the performance of the superintendent be judged? Not this specific superintendent and not her specific performance, but rather, because that can change, what are the three most important criteria for judging the performance of the superintendent? Martine?
Well, I think that, you know, there is an extensive process, I guess, included in those things. But one of them is, we actually moved the goals that the board set out, you know, for that year, in particular, if they were valuing year to year. Did they meet those goals? And among them, did it establish, in particular, greater partnerships in regards to the community? Was she able to lead her staff to bring about change? To me, those are some of the key things that need to be looked at in regards to the performance. What are the outcomes that we're seeing in terms of the students? And, you know, we set up a framework in regards to the milestones, and we said that we're going to evaluate based on those. We continue to do, you know, basically looking at those things.
David, the three criteria points for evaluating the superintendent?
Well, I would say that the quality of communication between superintendent and the board and the community, and how well the superintendent is able to keep the goals, keep to the goals that have been set, and also in perceiving the problems in the school system, and having the imagination to do something to alleviate the problems.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. First thing is really in dealing how she, in this case, or he, deals with the public. And does the public have confidence in it? Is she open to the public? Can the public bring forward what the problems are, and is she open to that? And that's a critical thing. Obviously, the most critical thing is, how do the schools run? And we've got serious problems in how the schools run, because the problems in a school need to be addressed in the school. And we're not doing that now. We kind of have a tendency to bring top-down mandates, some from Salem, some from Washington, DC, some from Duluth or Indianapolis, or all over. And we bring those, and we kind of push them onto the schools. And so by the time we put that together with the testing culture in our schools, the schools aren't working as well as they should. And she's responsible for making that happen, so she needs to take some more leadership there, in my opinion, and all superintendents should. And the last is the confidence of the employees and the board. When you sit down and talk to the board, obviously, is that relationship and communication good? But it's also with the teachers. Is that relationship and the communication with the teachers and with the other employees really solid? And that's, it's critical. Those are your frontline people. Those are the people that you really want to interact with, those are the people you want to respond to. I mean, that's really incredibly critical. So those are the three things that I think are the most important.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah. Are the schools working? Number one. And that's students, you know, we've set, we have, we now have benchmarks and milestones. Are we meeting those? If not, why not? But certainly, you got to look at that. Is the school community integrated with the rest of the business community, with the parents, with the neighborhoods? Are we doing a good job in that respect? And also, how is the relationship between the superintendent and the teachers and the board? All three of those things. I've talked about a 360-degree evaluation program, which I think ought to be instituted agency-wide, not only for principals, not only for teachers, but also for the superintendent and the board. And I think that would be a very useful tool that we ought to instill.
So you all talked about, you mentioned goals, benchmarks, standards. And being an elected official is about being, part of it is being clear about those as a group, as a school board, and also individually. It's also about prioritizing what you're going to do and what you're not going to do. So what is your number-one goal? If you're on the school board, or on the school board again, what's your number-one goal? And how should we evaluate you as to whether or not you've achieved that goal? Number-one goal, and how should we evaluate you? Martine?
Well, my number-one goal is to make sure that we allocate the resources to be able to look at closing the achievement gap. And I think that it can be evaluated pretty simply by looking at the results in the different areas. So for me, you know, that's pretty simple. I mean, you set the goal, and you decide whether you actually invested that money to reduce that gap or not. And I think along those lines is basically looking at the implementation of our equity policy to the full extent that it's looking for. And we can look at the creation also of programs, you know, if those programs and interventions that were actually funded, you know, lead to that closing of the gap or not.
Number-one goal, and how should we evaluate?
Appreciate the question, and I'll stick by it. But it's good, because I'm the moderator.
Exactly.
I'll make you.
Yeah, thank you. As we go forward, it's going to take more than just one goal, right? It's going to take a whole host of things. But I had to choose right now. My number-one goal is to have an A-quality principal in every building. And I think that's just absolutely imperative. And what was the second?
How will we evaluate you on the performance towards reaching your goal?
Right. So the, number one, if the district has a 360-degree evaluation program in place, then you can evaluate me as being successful, because right now we don't. And I hope to work with our colleagues and make that happen. And the results of those evaluations, I think, will speak for themselves.
Thank you. Steve?
My number-one goal is to have us look at how we deal with each school in the city in a different manner. We're looking, as I've mentioned earlier a little bit, we're looking back in other areas of the United States, actually, and down in Salem and every place else, for how to fix the problems in our school. And the problems in our school need to be fixed in the schools. And as long as we keep doing the testing, which is coming in, and it's so damaging to school after school. Not every school, because I don't know where you go to school, but a huge portion of our schools get really damaged by the testing and the testing culture that we have, the opposite of the achievement gap. You know, it's really not an achievement gap, it's a testing gap. That's not where we should be going. That's not really good, solid education. I want each of our schools to have a program of good, solid, well-rounded education. And we're not going to do it as long as we continue to approach the problems in this generalized manner. We need to open up how we deal with school after school and say, "Look, what are the problems in your school?" One school can have a third grade that's difficult, another one can have a fourth grade that's difficult. You can't bring in things from Washington, DC and Salem and expect it to make your school work.
So your number-one goal?
In fact, it gets in the way. That's the number-one goal. And the obvious way that you get evaluated is in elected office. You know, you vote people in or out. That's how you do that.
Thank you. David?
I think the number-one goal would be to make sure that all kids get a good education, and that would be, obviously, improving all the individual schools and not singling any of them out for better, for more money, or more services, or better programs. And of course, before you create goals, you have to have good communication with the citizens. And if there's not good communication, then they can't form goals, because they don't know what's happening. And I would think that the quality of education would be the primary goal.
So in the previous debate, and some of you have mentioned the issue of testing, give the audience a sense of when you think testing is appropriately utilized and when testing is not appropriately utilized. And try to be as concrete as you possibly can, as opposed to, sometimes it's appropriate, sometimes it's not. When exactly do you think it's appropriate, and when are you pretty sure it is not appropriate? And Steve, I'm going to start with you.
High-stakes standardized testing is not appropriate. End of story for what's not appropriate. What's appropriate is when you, when teachers test within their schools for what it is that kids know or don't know, and how that actually will alter their instruction. That's appropriate testing. Sometimes you test kids just to evaluate, maybe have a test to see how you, did you pass this class or not, to some degree? But the way we're doing the high-stakes testing now is absolutely crazy. Even Rudy Crew, who has a whole program through the governor that uses the high-stakes testing, he came into Portland and criticized it and said, "This is nuts, what we're doing." And it is nuts, what we're doing. Because, to begin with, it's pretty racist. And it's very, it's very damaging to kids who are struggling. We'll take those kids who are struggling in poorer schools, and we'll test them and create a whole test culture in their school, but we won't give them the same well-rounded education we might give somebody up in the West Hills. I mean, you've got to look at it that way. And we talked about evaluating the superintendent. We're evaluating her based on test scores. It's absolutely the wrong road. And if you spend much time out there taking a look at it, and I have for the last year and a half through Oregon Save Our Schools, you'll find that it's incredible how much pushback there is on the high-stakes testing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Just a second.
Yeah?
If the audience wishes to spend a question, break your hand, and students will pick up our delivery of oil in the bathroom, and we write it out, and it gets delivered over here, we sort it back.
David, when is testing appropriate and when it is not? Try to be as concrete as possible.
I think testing is appropriate in class as a determinant of what the kids have learned in a specific period of time. And I think it's inappropriate as it's being used by the state, because it pretty much terrorizes the teacher. And a lot of the kids probably don't test very well. I know I was not good with tests, I got very nervous. So I think, and I think that also, they could find a way to compile the data from the tests that are taken in class and use them for the state analysis.
Tom, thank you.
Yeah, I think this whole issue, that we've talked a lot about it, and I think we've over-talked it. I think we all know, it's all about teaching kids. And the teaching process is a continual assessment. So I'd say continual assessment, you're assessing all the time. In terms of the state tests, I think it's a legitimate concern of, say, the governor, who is the chief fiduciary of the taxpayers' money in this regard, that spending all the money on education, wanting to make sure that the money is spent correctly, and that it's working the best that we can. Clearly, the existing state quote-unquote standardized test does not do that. But I've heard a lot of suggestions from teachers, and a lot of suggestions from folks like Rudy Crew, that there's a place that we just have to design something that works. And I know it's not super easy, but I think we should just roll up our sleeves and do that, because I think the will in the state is there to make that happen.
Thank you. Martine?
It's kind of funny to be in the minority in this discussion. I was trying to think in regards to when it would not be appropriate, and I'll get to that in a minute. To me, testing is appropriate in regards to, is a tool in regards to the assessment of students. And what we do with the results of that test, I think this was the critical part. And listening to teachers, for example, Roosevelt High School, they use the data that comes out of those tests to be able to drive their instruction, to be able to improve in the areas that they identify that the student is lacking, in the areas in which they have not been able to succeed in instructing students adequately. So in that sense, to me, you know, it's very appropriate in that sense. I think it is inappropriate if we are using tests, you know, clearly there are cultural bias to be able to then justify inadequate or inequitable placement of students in the wrong areas. And we have, you know, areas that definitely need improvement, in particular, for example, in the area of special education. We have had, for a number of years, a high proportion, for example, in comparison to the population of African-American students placed in special ed, the same way with ESL students. So for me, if you were going to use a test, for example, you know, for an English-language learner that is first coming in, that is solely in English, and you're trying to test quote-unquote intelligence of what they know, then we need to use the language that they're coming into that school. So for me, I think that that's the part that, you know, where the inadequate part comes in, not the test itself, but what we do with that information and how that gets used to be able to drive learning. And the teachers that I speak to actually use those things and learn in that process.
So the next question is about neighborhood schools and boundaries. Notwithstanding the desire for neighborhood schools to provide equitable, robust educational opportunity district-wide, ought not attendance boundaries be reexamined district-wide? So notwithstanding the desire for neighborhood schools to provide equitable, robust educational opportunities district-wide, ought not attendance boundaries be reexamined district-wide? Why? What's your answer, yes or no, why or why not? Let's start with Tom.
Because it makes sense. And I think part of the issue is that the district has gotten into some trouble, and whether it's the Jefferson Cluster, or, you know, Beverly, Clary, or you could just name the school that has recently been looked at. It's because we haven't taken a step back and looked at a 10-year program. And so I think boundaries should be looked at in that sense, and absolutely, we need to do it.
David?
I think that they should, the boundaries should be readjusted. And I think that they should do it in both a racially equitable way and also socio-economic. And with that also, I think that they should reduce the transfer policy, tighten up that policy as well.
Thank you. David?
It was me.
Sorry. Martine?
Well, you know, I think that the, you know, some of the discussions, I mean, coming out of the Jefferson Cluster, I mean, I think in previous years, you know, the school board has, school board members have expressed a concern in regards to the boundaries themselves. You know, some of us have stated that some of those boundaries, I mean, look like, in the best case, some of the gerrymandering that was happening in the South in regards to, you know, how the boundaries were set. It's unclear as to what was the purpose of this, because there's not necessarily straight lines in places where potentially they could have them. So yes, definitely, I think that there is worth evaluating. The challenge, of course, is the politics of it, in regards to how do you manage that in a way that you begin to convince people in regards to what is in the best interest of the whole, of the district, rather than the particulars in regards to one school neighborhood? That's where we run into trouble, by the way, in regards to the high school redesign. Big ideas that came out, and very good ideas, the challenges that people were wedded to their neighborhood school and did not see the, you know, or did not buy into the bigger picture, or saying, "Hey, let's really create this high school that is going to be concentrated this way." And in the end, you could potentially look at it in regards to some of the equity questions by actually developing some criteria that says, "Here's the students that are going to attend, and these are the first chance that they're going to get to attend this school or not." I think it's worth it, but I think it's going to require a lot of work on the community and the board.
Thank you. Steve?
Right now, we have crisis-to-crisis management in Portland schools. This crisis rules, and this crisis, and on and on. You've seen it in the stuff this year with the North Northeast Coalition, you're seeing it now with the Beverly-Clary stuff, it goes on and on.
It goes on and on and on. We need, and I've talked right from the start of my campaign about the need to stabilize the school district. The first thing you need to do is to come up with a genuine educational philosophy. Somebody last week, Pamela Knowles, said, well, we have a, a, a plan that we put forth, a strategic plan, but it's real generalized and stuff. So we need to have a basic educational philosophy, what it is we want to teach in our schools, when, where, what are the circumstances of that? We don't have that now. The se, the second thing that you do is to stabilize the boundaries. You want to take a look at them. In order to do that, you have to take care of the mess in the middle grades. Is it K eight? Is it middle school? Do we have, what kind of programs are we going to have at those grade levels? We, we just kind of do it back and forth. You need to do it in a real sensible manner where you say, this is what we want to have at this grade level. This is what we want to teach. How can we do that? We don't do that. We jump all over the place. And that's one of the reasons that I want to get back on the school board, is to do that specific thing. Let's stabilize it, build the foundation, then you can build on top of that. Right now, we don't have a foundation to build on top of. It's, it's sand.
Thank you. How would you describe the relationship between the teachers' union and the administration? And assuming you're running to continuous, always continuously improve things, which I think you all are, in, how would you improve the relationship, no matter how you describe it, good, bad, positive, negative? What are the, some of the things as a school board member would you do to improve the existing relationship with the teachers' union? Let's start with David.
Well, judging from my own experience with the board, and they're ignoring me for a year, I would imagine that the teachers probably go through similar communicative problems with, with the board. So I think that they need to improve communication and start listening to teachers and really the, letting the teachers kind of take the lead because they're the ones that are in the trenches with the kids and they know what the kids need. And I think they need to probably have a little more respect for the teachers.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, twofold, and I guess I'll go, I'll start with the beginning, which is if, if we have a really excellent educational leader, otherwise known as a principal, like we do in this building, the relationships are very good with the teachers. So I, I really think that making that a priority is number one. In, in terms of the board's relationship with the teachers, it's just a matter of communication. And I, I have reached out to lots of teachers in this district and will continue to do that on a, on a regular basis.
Martine?
No, this is one of those, those things that I, I, as, as I mentioned, I think at the last forum, one of the, the challenges thing in regards to how do we, we spend those things. And I think as we approach labor negotiations, I think that we'll hear more in regards to whatever tension there is. Because there are some, there will be some, some things that will get put on the table that'll be different in regards to what's, what people want to do or not. How do I describe the relationship? It's working, actually, contrary to what, what people are, are putting out. There is, you know, regular meetings between the superintendent and the leadership with the leadership of the union. There are working committees that are, that are work, that are, that meet regularly, both in regards to the administration of the contract. There's meetings by the superintendent, chief academic officer with the leadership of the union every six weeks. There's legislative advocacy that is taking place together with the, with the union. And the uni, and, and the teachers, by the way, are part of the district. So it's not, you know, that difference that, that people argue for. There, there is, you know, always, I think, areas, and by the way, one of the, I sit on the, I participate in the, in the Achievement Compact Committee, and there are teachers that are also participating. There's leadership leaders participating, as well as administrators from the district and some community members that are participating in, in that part of the process. How I would, I would like to, to improve it is work with the PAT to address the need for high-quality culturally proficient teachers in front of the students of the highest need, work with the PAT to identify those areas of collective bargaining that, that agreement that foster any inequities, and work with the PAT to help identify the skillset of teachers most successful in working with historically underserved students.
Thank you. Steve?
One of the reasons that I'm endorsed by the Portland Association of Teachers is that I have a different attitude about who teachers are, I think. The teachers are the front line of this school system. They're the ones that see your kids every day, day in and day out, hour in and hour out, minute in and minute out. That's who we should be talking with like crazy. And they do sit down and have regular discussions with the superintendent. And that's a good thing, absolutely. It's difficult sometimes to get much out of that, though, when they talk with her. Does she actually follow through on, even on things he agrees with? It doesn't always get done. But with the school board, other than Pamela Knowles, the, the teachers in this, the, the leaders of, of the union, and they're really good people, fabulous people that you have. It makes a lot of difference. I've been a union leader in the past, and I know a lot of union leaders. And some of them aren't very good. They're pretty self-centered sometimes. But the people running the Portland Association of Teachers are fabulous, wonderful educators, wonderful people, care about kids right up front. So why won't the school board members, including my opponents, sit down regularly with them and actually meet with them and talk with them? Although, once in a while they will, but they want to sit down regularly. Why wouldn't we want to talk to the frontline people who have all the experience and all the knowledge in school after school after school? Why wouldn't we want to sit down and talk to them? It's a good question. My answer is, we should, and I plan to do that.
How would you measure teaching effectiveness? How would you measure teaching effectiveness? Martine?
How would you measure teacher effectiveness? I think that, you know, there is a, a tool that gets, that gets used, that has a lot of different measures. But how, what I would look at it in regards to the, the, one, you know, in regards to their, their, their knowledge of the, of the content area, their effectiveness in regards to making sure that their, their students that they have before them actually progress and, and are ready for the next level, you know, whatever that might be. And, you know, how well do they involve, you know, parents in that process to be supportive of, of their work? Many times, I think that, you know, there, there is a, a part that gets missing on that. And the leadership that they showed in regards to working collectively with others to be able to share their experiences, that's what I see in regards to some of the effective teachers out there, that they're actually using the data to drive their, their, their instruction, but also they're, they're working collaboratively with each other and sharing those experiences with their, with their, with their colleagues to be able to break down from the silos that I think many times they fall into. Those are, to me, those, those are examples of some of the effectiveness.
David?
I think I already answered it.
Sorry. Tom?
First of all, it's not my job to measure teacher effectiveness. It's the, it's the principal's job to measure, which is why we need absolutely great educational leaders in every building. And if we had a 360-degree evaluation program district-wide, the principal would be, would be helped by valuation from the students, the parents, and the, the peers from the teachers. So I think that's the way to do it.
Okay, we're going to go to the 60-second answers now.
They didn't get me on that one, no.
What's that? Steve, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't think you answered it.
I didn't answer the question. I was... We have an evaluation tool that was worked out with the administration, the superintendent, and, and the teachers' union. And it's, it's, well, without evaluation tools, well-respected all throughout the whole state of Oregon. I mean, people are saying, wow, this is a great evaluation tool. What we don't want to get caught up in is to, to going into the corporate, the corporate educational reform ideas, starting to evaluate teachers with, by using tests of the children. It, it doesn't work, over and over and over, they show it doesn't work. No matter how you go at it, it doesn't work. It's, it's not accurate, it doesn't make sense. I mean, if you get out and read a lot, you just go, wow, this is unbelievable. But the, the other thing is, you can't really evaluate from outside, you have to evaluate from inside the school. And we have that tool for the, for the principal to do that. We shouldn't have to really evaluate anywhere near what we do now. I mean, it's, you've got a great teacher and everybody knows that's a great teacher, and she's worked in your school for 15 years, or he's worked there for 12 years, and you're spending your principal's time and energies to go out there and give that teacher an evaluation that she doesn't or he doesn't really care about? That's crazy. I mean, why would we want to spend our time that way? So we need to not rethink this outside, bring it in from someplace else evaluation system. We need to really rethink really who we should be evaluating. There's teachers we should be all over. Everybody knows that. Not a real lot, not a large number of them, but most of them we shouldn't have to mess with unless they want to be, get some extra help.
Teachers can be evaluated, kind of first starting at the very basic level, just by talking to the kids in the class, talking to the parents, looking at the grades. Parents know a lot about the quality of, of the information that their kids are, are gathering in, in class. And from reading through some of the material that, about the, about these different systems for evaluating teachers, it seems to be just this obsession with data gathering and it, everything I read, it, it looks like they're putting teachers in a straitjacket, that they won't know which way to turn. So I think just going back to the basics, grades, talking to other teachers, talking to the, the teacher.
So we've covered a fair number of the policy issues and political issues facing the district and the city. This question is more personal. What was your best and worst day in high school? And why? Your best and worst day in high school? Martine?
My best day in, in high school, it had to be 10th to 12th grade because I was, junior high was 9th grade where I went, so. Probably the best day was when I was at, you know, playing soccer in, in the field and, and, and I actually scored a gold. There were some excellent players. I lived in, in Tacoma, Washington, and, and there were many students that were coming, you know, internationally because they were on, their parents were on the service. So they were great players. So it was probably the best day of my life in, in that way. The other, I think, in terms of the worst day of my life was, was the fear, I think, of much like being present here. It's being on stage for a, a play, Macbeth, you know, dinner or something to that effect, and, and having to come out and onstage. So that was probably the worst day.
Steve? Best and worst day in high school?
The best day was a date with this young woman who was a little younger than me, and it was my first date, and it was a marvelous day. And...
How'd it go?
It went pretty well. It went pretty well, yeah. And the worst day was, all those days, there were a lot of them where I went to football games or basketball games and sat on the bench and never made it into the game, ever into the game. And that happened a lot. And I loved sports. My dad would be up there in the stands, my mom, you know, and stuff, and I would sit. And we'd win by three touchdowns and I wouldn't play. Win by 25 points and might not play. So those were all, all hard days.
Thank you. Tom?
This is a long time ago.
It's a memory question.
Yes, it is.
We want to like people that have good memories. Or at least accurate ones.
You know, one of the, one of my favorite things, I, I went to 12 years of Catholic school. I grew up in a very Catholic family. I, I've had my mouth washed out with soap plenty of time, still hasn't done any good. But the, one of my favorite times at the high school was when my brother was in a play Godspell. And I just organized getting the, the donuts and the coffee and the cookies and selling. It was a week-long play, and so I made a lot of money that week. And I was, it was fun to be part of that culture, the, the whole play culture and the creativity and, and seeing how that whole, how it worked. Probably my worst day was, was graduation because my favorite teacher, English teacher, did not show. And I, I remember being hurt by that. And the reason he didn't show was that there was some sort of conflict between him, between he and, and the administration. And it really bummed me out.
Thank you. So we've got some, I'm going to start in addition to the...
That's the one question I can actually answer.
Oh, sorry. You're being hard on yourself. Best and worst day in high school? Sorry, David.
I think my best day was by far when I met my girlfriend and we had converged at the same point when we were coming back from ditching school. And we talked a little bit and found out that we both love to ditch school, so we had something in common. And she and I were together for a while. And my worst day, I think, was graduation also because I looked around at, and all my friends were gone, nobody was there, everybody had gone to Woodstock. So that, that dates me and also...
But if you had a cell phone, you could have, you know...
Thank you. We've got some questions from the, the audience. One is, what are your views and plans regarding courageous conversations, the courageous conversations work currently being done in the district? Steve?
How long is this?
This is a minute.
I like the courageous conversations. They do a lot of good work, I think. But we, on top of that, in fact, the state, I, I've done a lot of following the OEIB, the governor's new superboard down there. I've gone down there for almost every meeting for quite a while. And they have an equity lens that they just put in. It's the conversation, the equity lens. That's a nice first step, but we've still got a lot of inequities that we need to deal with, that we're, we really haven't looked at. We've had 20-some years of pretty inequitable education in this school system. And I don't think we, we've done a good enough job of looking at what that brought about. What, what was the outcome of that inequity? It, it's, it's pretty broad and, and we need to take a look. It's, it's kind of like, fine, we're doing the conversation, but let's take the next step now and really look at the inequities and see what we can do about them.
Thank you. Martine?
More than we are.
Your views and plans regarding courageous conversations work?
Well, again, I mean, I think that the district has invested quite a bit of money in, in the process in regards to courageous conversation around race, by the way, and, and racial equity issues. And I think it, it needs to continue along that path, but also move towards actually putting much more practical outcomes in regards to measures, in regards to what are we trying to accomplish. Among them, for example, the, the putting in place of an affirmative action plan to be able to then deal with some of the inequities in regards to looking at the composition of the, of the, of the staff, you know, vis-à-vis the, the population we represent years ago, 20 years ago or so. The, the state passed this thing, this act that says all, all districts should strive to have teachers that reflect the student population they serve. It hasn't accomplished anywhere in, in the state, and I think that we need to basically, you know, go back to that.
Well, I don't think it would be necessary to have teachers who reflect the population so much as just good teachers who can relate, because then, you know, we're sort of dividing things up by race again. But I, you know, I read, read through the equity sheet and it's, it's a very, you know, broad sweeping proclamations... proclamations about how they're going to achieve this, but it remains to be seen. I did notice, though, that white was capitalized and children of color was not capitalized in page two of the equity sheet. So, remains to be seen how much heart is really in it.
Tom?
I mean, as a board member, I'm gonna look at any policy and investment and ask, is it working? And I don't know whether we've had a really a formal evaluation of courageous conversation. Certainly, the intent is absolutely correct, but I don't, I want to see evaluation of, is this money that we're spending working? And I also want to hear from the teachers and the students about that issue. And I also, it's a bit of a broader issue, but professional development, you know, what are, what else can we be doing for teachers in terms of professional development to actually get the results that we all want as a community?
Thank you. Question from the audience. What is your opinion or preference on the two different options that Portland Public Schools has proposed to solve Beverly Cleary's overcrowding issue for next year thirteen, fourteen? Let's start with Tom.
I haven't delved down into those issues, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear more about them, just frankly. So, I can't, I can't tell you that tonight. I will say that some of the parent reaction has been more to do with the process, which I think we've heard before, and so I think we really need to be cognizant of how to do public process better than what we've done. And it also gets back to the taking a step back and having a ten-year plan and framework on these issues.
Steve?
Yeah, the problem that I see is that it's still crisis-to-crisis management. We're going to go out there and make some adjustments either way that you go. We're going to make some adjustments now without an overall plan for what we're really trying to do as a school district. I have not sat down and listened to the community, because that's, it's hard to be, I haven't been at those meetings, and you always need to do that in order to make those types of decisions. So, it takes a lot more study than I've given it in order to actually say which plan I would like, and it takes talking to a lot of people. That's the type of thing that I think a school board member needs to do. So, if I was on the school board and this came up, I would have been out in that community. I'd have talked to the leaders, I'd have talked to the people in the school, I'd have sat down with people, I'd have looked at the issues, and I'd have measured them against the whole district and what goes on and the whole situation. I'm not in that position now, and so I haven't done that. But, it's still crisis-to-crisis, here's another crisis, now we're gonna deal with it again. We need to get past that.
David?
I don't have an answer for that. I'm learning a lot about how to answer questions when you don't know the answer. It's quite an art, but I haven't mastered it yet.
Martine?
Don't feel bad. Sometimes there is no answer. And in this case, I think it is, you know, for me at least, as a sitting board member, I think it would be somebody responsible to actually come out with a position without having a truly discussion with the rest of my colleagues on this, and to have a full briefing in regards to the staff, to see what are they hearing from the parents, in addition to actually going out and talking to the folks that are gonna be impacted by these decisions. So, it's, there is no clear-cut answer in this in regards to favor in one scenario or the other.
Okay. What specific steps can Portland Public Schools take to increase parental involvement in schools? David?
Well, I think they could have more activities in the school that are, that also involve the parents, if they had certain specific activities that, more often than the parents would want to spend more time in the school. And also possibly looking for volunteers to do gardening and other things like that.
Thank you. Tom?
Communicate with them, teachers, invite them in. Project-based learning, things that are relevant to the kids, that get them excited, and the kids are bringing their parents in, asking the parents to share their skills with the kids in the schools. So, it's all of the above.
Martine?
I think we need to continue investment in regards to some of the community partners and some of the work in the different schools around parental involvement. But also, I think it needs to be clear in regards to parental involvement is more than just showing up at the school. It also involves in regards to what can they do to support their student in regards to actually showing up at the school, time management, you know, how to support them in regards to their homework and stuff. You know, I organized with, when I was the executive director of Portland Schools Alliance, and we had some work with Madison High School, for example. We brought in a hundred parents and students to participate at meetings, but then the administration didn't know what to do with those parents. So, the challenge is, I think, that we have to be clear in regards to what are we asking parents to participate in? And what are we willing to do as staff? I mean, the staff, what are the staff willing to do to actually, you know, go the extra mile to be able to have those parents participate? Whether the teachers actually make those phone calls and encourage parents to participate, or stay after school, as many of them do, to be able to then connect with those parents. But be able to recognize the different needs that different parents have, and the diversity that they comprise.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, those are three good answers, disparate and very good. All of them are, really make sense. And we need to do all of those things, absolutely. One of the things we overlooked is the one that David talked about, is particularly in the middle grades, where it's really tough to get parents in, is to have those really athletics and activities. We need to put those things back. You gotta ban in your kid's school in the middle grades? No. Do you have a sports team that's tied to the school with a coach there? No. I taught in Vancouver for, actually Evergreen in Vancouver, and we had unbelievable stuff in the middle school up there. We had full sports program, get on buses, play games, leagues, you know, hundreds of kids involved. We had five hundred kids involved in the music program. That kind of stuff really brings people into the schools, and that gets them in there. And so, that's important. Another critical thing is how we deal with parents who, where the home is difficult. Do we have really good, solid wraparound programs? We've been pushing for that in that organization, Oregon SOS, that I'm one of the founders of. Wraparound programs means we transition the kids from the home to the school. What do we have to do that? We have to focus much more on that.
So, what about the families where the parents don't have time to be involved actively in the educational life of their child in the school? What are your creative ideas to still make sure that that family succeeds as much as possible? David?
Well, we could send material home with the kids that might spark some interest at home in some type of project, or that maybe they would require the parents to do with the kids, or maybe even just a kind of a questionnaire about their child's experience in school that could just engage their interest in the direction of the school.
Steve?
Trying to get parents involved who don't want to be involved is a, I don't know, it doesn't, it hardly doesn't even, in a way, make sense.
If I could, can't. Don't have the time.
Who can't get involved, okay. Missed a little on that. The wraparound programs, I want to come back to them because they're so critically important that we begin to look at those and organize how we're going to do those. Are we down talking to people, for instance, at the State Department to get money for wraparound programs? How do we work with the agencies and those types of things? To bridge that gap for the parent who can't get in, and the kid is having trouble in school and difficulties and stuff? How are we actually bridging that gap? What are we doing? Not a real lot right now, but we've got people on the school board, I mean, you take, who really are experts at that, but they haven't brought anything forward yet that really works on that. Matt Morton, he's head of NEA, they, that information's out there. And we need to kind of get and lock into those agencies, and also into like the county agencies, and begin to look and say, what do we need to do in order to allow that child to be successful in school, even though maybe the home life isn't there, or the parents can't get there?
Something that we can agree on with Mr. Beal. One of the things that the Portland Schools Alliance was doing was calling parents regularly, one, before the meetings and stuff, and if they were not gonna be able to show up to that meeting, to at least inform them in regards to what was happening at the school, what else they could do in regards to be able to help their student. So, I think that, you know, working with organizations that we do have a partnership that actually come into the schools and be able to coordinate those efforts a little bit better, in addition to the other institutions like, you know, the library, the Monoma County in terms of the different, you know, son's schools, or the Department of Community Justice, for example, are important avenues that I don't think that we tapped on as well and as coordinated as we could be. I think that we need to be a bit more coordinated in regards to those efforts. And not forgetting, again, the value of that call from that teacher to the house, and even if they're not able to reach that parent, to be able to say, hey, your kid is doing great, it's important to support him.
Tom?
Yeah, this is, this is another one of these questions, which is pretty broad. So, one is, in high school, let's have a full day of high school. So, it's, if, when there are parents who are not, have the ability to be involved, one of the ways, not only for those kids, but for all the kids, is for school to be extended. And this last go-around, we lost the equivalent of three-plus weeks in school, and that, we should put that right back in. In terms of communicating with parents, I see a parent up there that worked with Franklin students to design an application on their phone that works perfectly for the students and the parents. So, that's a model that we probably ought to expand across the district. And then, there's other partnerships that we can have in terms of the, of what summer looks like, because there's no question, when kids are not in school, they're slipping, and we need to address it.
So, local newspaper has editorialized that the enrollment cap at Benson should be lifted or modified. What is your position? Steve?
I was out at Benson today, and I went through their tech stuff, and you went to classroom after classroom after classroom with hundreds of thousands and probably millions of dollars' worth of equipment, and they weren't teaching anything in that class, because we've got them cut down so much. We need to look at how we can get rid of the cap at Benson. We've got handful of a hundred, three hundred, four hundred kids who want to get into Benson and can't, and yet they're doing terrific education there, but they can't get in. And I'm for lifting the cap, but I'm for looking at some systems. I've kind of put a couple things out there about how to maybe do that in a politically feasible way, because obviously, one of the problems, as you lift the cap at Benson, you take kids from Madison, you take kids from Jeff, and that's a difficult problem. I've got some ideas on how to do that, but we definitely need to get Benson back online in terms of allowing kids who want to go there, go there, because it does, it does a wonderful job.
Tom?
Yeah, so, I feel very passionate about this, and it's not, it's not just about Benson. This is about having our school system absolutely integrated with our local economy, and about our, the knowledge and the skills that exist in the community, sharing them with our students, allowing those students then to realize that there's a future, and they can have a job at the end of the road. And I've spoken to many, many businesses, they don't, they can't find the welders they need, they can't find the programmers they need, they can't find the electricians they need, and we ought to partner and make that happen as part of what we're doing. And the, and it's just, and it's project-based learning, it's how kids can actually learn math and learn science and get turned on to other topics, because they, they're actually doing stuff, they're realizing it, they're producing something that works for the community. So, we, we've got to do it. It's not only Benson. Franklin's got a program here, Cleveland does not, they should, and it's a area that I'm gonna be very focused on.
David?
I think it's a good idea to raise the cap on Benson. I think that keeping, though we're sacrificing education for higher numbers in the other schools, and I don't think that's a good system to be enslaved by.
Martine?
Well, you know, you gotta remember that I was on the losing end of that boat in the high school redesign, so, and I was not in favor of the cap at Benson, or lowering it, having a son that graduated from Benson High School and seeing the, you know, the education that we got, and also seeing Benson as a school, when we don't see the disparities in regards to the different ethnic communities, and in regards to student population, the rest of the population that are doing well. But I think that, you know, the reality is, in regards to looking at stabilizing the system, I think the cap at Benson, you know, must be seen as a temporary solution, that we have to go back and then look at that. And I think that you shared, you know, you facilitated a Blue Ribbon Committee that looked at in regards to what can we do to improve at Benson? And among those things, I mean, that came out clearly is that the district needs to do a better job in regards to partnership with the industry leaders to be able to say, okay, welcome actually to those partnerships, to be able to then go back and grow Benson. But we have to look at that Benson in terms of the impact on the other schools that, at this point, have been somewhat stabilized.
Thank you. I think I got everybody. What's your definition of a comprehensive education? What is your definition of a comprehensive education? I assume by the questioner that the school district should strive to provide comprehensive education. Your definition. David?
Well, I think a comprehensive education should include many things that we seem to not be teaching in certain grades, and things like social studies. I was shocked when my daughter told me that she doesn't have social studies, she goes here to Franklin. And also, things like music. I'd love to see a program started that they're using in Venezuela, the Venezuelan Youth Orchestra, where every single child studies an instrument, and it has an astonishing effect of bringing schools together, I mean, bringing kids together and giving them a sense of ownership. And I think also, there should be some relevant things added to the curriculum that aren't just like a pipeline into jobs in the tech industry.
Thank you. Comprehensive education, your definition. Tom?
The, what do we want in our kids? We want them to be able to read, we want them to be able to write, we want them to be able to think, we want them to be tapped into their creative selves, and that is what a comprehensive education does. So, I think we absolutely want, we want a physical, we need kids out, you know, I read one thing where it, for every forty-five minutes of sitting in a class, they should go out and run for fifteen. And so, it really is, it's everything. I think, when I dream, I dream about changing the way that we educate, and Pedro Noguera has called it the cemetery method, where... And Pedro Noguera has called it the cemetery method, where you line up in straight rows and you're quiet as possible. We need project-based learning, we need people and kids out in the community, we need them outside, and we need them exploring and doing the critical thinking.
Martine?
An education that I think from my perspective, common is in a high school diploma, representing satisfactory completion of all required elective coursework, as well as mastery of essential skills. An education which a student is prepared to go to college should he or she decides to do that and be able, or be able to prepare to survive in the, in the real world.
Thank you, Steve.
I always say that you can stop anybody on the street and in five minutes they can give you an explanation of what a good, solid, well-rounded education is, and I have 57 seconds, so I can't give you that definition, but I can tell you, we used to have that in Portland. And now I can tell you what's, what the main thing that's stopping it. The main thing that's stopping is that we're now a test culture oriented. We're not oriented towards a well-rounded, solid education. We're oriented towards those test scores. That's where we spend our time and our energy is on the test scores, and then in order to try to achieve those better, we bring in these mandates and things from the top. They brought in 50 when I taught at, in Evergreen, that we could remember one day, we sat down and we said, okay, can you remember all the initiatives that came out of the administration offices? There's 50 of them. And all our time and energy was spent there. How many of them were good for my classroom? There was one that was pretty decent, I thought, that was helpful. I mean, you have to look at how the schools are actually run and you have to change that in order to get at having good education again in this school system. And we're not, we're not going in that direction now.
So we've now entered the time of the debate where we're going to lightning round. Yes, 20 seconds to answer the question. I want to try to get in as many of the questions, the specific questions that we have not already, topics that we have not already covered from the audience and then some other questions that the PTAs have given me. Is it appropriate for the school board to take a position against a federal or state policy that the board believes to be destructive to the education of our kids? Unfunded mandates. Martine?
Yes.
David? David?
You're gonna take 20 seconds to read it again. Can you read that again?
Oh, is it appropriate for the school board to take a position against a federal or state policy that is, they perceive to be destructive for the education of our kids?
Well, I would say yes, but I don't think that...
If that's, yes is good. We'll move on. Steve? It can be faster than 20 seconds, too. Moderator's decision.
And we have some areas where we need to be doing that, that we're not doing it.
Yes. Okay, do you feel, how do you feel about cuts to PERS? And how do you anticipate PERS cuts will impact our schools? Tom?
Well, now, that's not a 20-second. That's not a 20-second question.
I'll give you the full 20 seconds.
There you go. I could, I only have six more seconds I can stall. I think our PERS system needs to be altered and I think there's a lot, so bottom line is shared sacrifice. The PERS is out of whack and I, and I do believe that. And I also believe that we need a lot more money for education and it shouldn't just be the PERS, it should be the rest of the tax loopholes that we can find in the legislature.
Once you got going, you did great. Steve?
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of truth in that. It's not just PERS, there's a lot of tax loopholes and other places we could go to. We need to do some work with PERS. If I had the PERS answer, I would be running, I would be the governor, probably. I wouldn't be sitting here tonight. I don't have the PERS answer.
Okay, Martine?
So what would be the impact? I mean, I think it would be a positive impact if you actually get, you know, get some savings out of it. I mean, I think that there is, the challenge, of course, is the commitment they got made to, to the folks that are currently on PERS, and how do we balance that? How do we talk to folks in regards to looking at, at the, at the future in regards to long-term investment in our children so they actually can continue to put in some money and generate some money for, for us as we're getting older?
Well, I like what Tom said, and I think that the, I think that the problem, I have sort of mixed feelings because the teachers, they're sort of underpaid here. I mean, they're paid, they're paid less than they get in Vancouver, they're, they have overpopulated classes, and they do take a lot of their work home, so I think it's sort of a payoff that at some point they deserve.
Okay. Name one specific cut or change you will push for, you will propose to put more money in the classrooms. Martine?
I don't know if I would push for any, for any cut in regards to that, but I mean, I think I would push more the state in regards to lifting up or getting under from Measure Five so that we can actually collect in the, the local action levy, because if we are able to change that, then we basically generate in addition 27 million dollars that we can collect right now to be able to then invest back into the schools.
Steve?
We need to manage the testing and if we did that, we would save a lot of money. The governor's program is about 225 million down a rat hole. That isn't going to help any of our kids directly in K-12, so there's a place we ought to at least be pushing.
David?
We need to get Wi-Fi out of the schools and go back to a safe, more reliable cabled internet system.
Tom?
Just a quick one, this is maybe controversial, but the district hired a negotiating expert and that, you know, that took a lot of money and I've spoken to a lot of teachers, maybe, maybe we can use that money for tablets in the school. And my point here is, is that our HR department should be that. And if that's not the case, then we, we need to look at, at our HR department. And there's other examples like that.
But your, but your time is up. Okay. Will you take the Oakes tests that are required of high school students and publicly report your score? Steve?
Could you repeat the start of that again, please?
Uh, will you take the Oakes tests, tests that are required of high school students and publicly report your score?
Sure.
Martine?
If it was in solidarity with the students and provided that the, that the folks evaluating actually make a commitment to, to work on the, on those gaps that you find that I was not during, at the schools, definitely. The public, ah, depending, I guess, on the outcome of the scores, I would want to see whether that one makes it public or not.
David?
I would take the test. I'd be happy to make the results public.
Tom?
At this point, I have nothing to lose.
All right. Tom?
Yes, I would take it and also I, I think that it's, it's, the test is going away, so it's somewhat irrelevant.
We've got new ones coming.
Should the district ask high school students to participate in evaluating their teachers? And one, one reason why, either yes or no? Should the district ask high school students to participate in evaluating their teachers? Why or why not? Martine?
I think that, you know, years ago, the, the student senate at Madison High School actually organized a survey in regards to the students, in regards to feedback, in regards to the performance of the teachers without having it binding to the evaluation. And I think it's important to, you know, to have that participation, to be able to have a sense of how well you're doing as a teacher based on some feedback from the students.
Yeah, I think that kids should be participating in evaluation of their teachers, and the reason is, is because they experience a long, large part of their lives with their teachers.
Steve?
Not in a formal way, but in informal way. I have no problem with it. I used to, actually, that was the last thing I did. When I would have a class and they would move on, I would give them an evaluation of me and sometimes you learn some interesting things. But I wouldn't have wanted them to actually formally be part of a formal evaluation because, hey, they weren't very good at it, they didn't have good criteria, there were a lot, there are a lot of reasons why you don't want kids doing that. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
Tom?
Yes, and, you know, I've talked about 360-degree and I realize maybe that's just jargon, people don't understand what that is. So that means, I think, from a institutional basis, and it's the teachers, the parents, the principals, the board, everybody should, so in terms of teachers, absolutely students should evaluate. So should parents and so should other teachers, as well as the principal, from the principal. It's the students evaluating, it's the, it's the parents, it's the teachers. So this is a best practice where we all can learn from each other and we, we learn the good things that we can share, we learn the things that are not so good that we need to change. And so I would make it part of institutionalize into our culture.
So Mayor Hales and the Portland City Council have to make some tough budget decisions in the next budget year. You happen to find yourself on a 20-second elevator ride with Mayor Hales. Give us your best 26, 20-second pitch, why there should be no cuts to the school police officer force. No cuts. Your best pitch, 20 seconds. Tom?
Me? Okay. The, the officers is part of, it's an extension of community policing. It's absolutely, it's critical to the safety of our students and when you feel safe, you're in a safer place to learn and it's, will keep the community safer, so I would absolutely want to have those officers maintained.
Steve?
Yeah, I would agree with what Tom just said, but I don't think he can get in 20 seconds, but they, also, I'd bring in the gang problem. You, I mean, you really, you really need somebody out there in those high schools who you could, who is there, and that presence really makes a lot of difference for kids to feeling safe and for everybody feeling safe.
So again, you're pitching the mayor why he should not cut this. David?
Well, I actually think they should.
Well, that'll be a short ride. Why should they?
Well, I, I think it's a bit of a myth that to placate the parents, there's never been a, a school shooting that's been stopped by school police. I don't think the problems in schools are that difficult, that we need policemen at every school.
I think what, what I would say, I think it's important to, to make sure that you have an investment right now in regards to police actually building a relationship with the, with the young people before they actually get in trouble or the, the police continues to profile students. We have a diverse student population, they need to learn how to work with that, with that population so that when the young people grow older, they don't get into trouble and they actually know they're police officers.
All right, this is the last 20 seconds, then you'll have a one-minute closing statement, but the last 20 seconds comes from the audience. And these are the kinds of questions that elected officials get, so I'm looking forward to your 20-second answer. Would you rather go to Cleveland or Franklin High School and why?
I'd rather go to Franklin because I like the outside environment much, much better. I mean, I do, it's just, it's got this pleasant outside environment. Cleveland's kind of down on the street, really. I was the guy who, years ago, I was telling this story to somebody, that actually in the back rooms, when I was on the school board, they were going to close Cleveland and I saved it.
Thank you. Tom?
Franklin, because I could walk to it in four minutes.
Martine?
You know, it's a difficult question, but, but I think without having a real context to it, I have to go with, with the fact that I worked with 18 years for the, for the American Friends Service Committee and that they were the Quakers, so I have a tendency to, and a bias towards that. But also I think that, that there is a recognition of the work that, that has happened here locally, not only, you know, at Cleveland, but also frankly, in regards to looking towards improving the academic achievement for all students in terms of all schools.
David?
I'd rather go to Franklin because my daughter goes here.
That was a much more definitive set of answers than I was anticipating. Kudos to the candidates. All right, now you'll have one-minute closing statement. Let's begin with David.
Well, as you know, my, my concern is safety. You know what my concern is, and I'm obviously a single-issue candidate. I may not be the best messenger for this, but I've been around the world, I've spoken to scientists, and the usual ratio here is that I'll reach probably about three of you. And the rest will just kind of turn away, disbelieve, go back into the comfort zone. I have a lot of material back here for you to take, DVDs and some hard copy material. The science is irrefutable. Don't take my word for it. Look it up, look up. Wi-Fi, health, schools. The issue's on fire in Europe, it's, it's on fire in Canada. France is taking Wi-Fi out of its schools, just found out a couple of weeks ago. Switzerland rewired all of its computers with hardwire. Bavaria refuses to take Wi-Fi. It's a real issue. Exposure is cumulative.
And your time's up. Tom?
When I tell people I'm running for school board, they, most of the responses, they look at me and say, why are you doing that? It's the most thankless job out there. And the reason I'm doing it is because there's, there's nothing more important. I think I have a background of community organizing, of being, I was on an elected official, I was the city council of Corvallis when I was young, I cut my teeth, but it's the same thing of being on the school board overseeing a large staff-driven bureaucracy. And what I learned there is you either lead or you're going to be led. And I, I learned that at a young age and I, and I want to help join the board and, and help that leading process. I went to Nicaragua after that, at the height of the Contra War, kids were literally being killed by US bullets and I came back and organized for three years across the country to change that. And so I, I learned how to community organize and I've been able to, fortunate enough to start a few businesses. So I, I want to combine those skills and work with the parents and the students and the community to make these schools the best they can be.
Thank you. Steve?
Corporate educational reform has destroyed all sorts of school systems to a huge degree, the same size as Portland. One of the reasons I want to get on the school board is because I recognize this and I'm not sure that the people on the school board now do, and we need to fight against it to keep Portland as good as it is and a lot better. And it takes a lot of research to understand what's happened in school district after school district across the country. The second thing I just wanted to mention, which hasn't come up tonight, which is libraries. Libraries are a perfect example of what we don't have in Portland. We don't have certificated librarians working throughout our libraries, even though it's such a critical thing. I mean, way back in 1983, I was talking on the school board about how important it is to build a grade school around a library and a, and a librarian, certificated librarian, and we don't have them. Well, why don't we have them? Part of the reason is the corporate educational reform. We've got these great testing programs, but we can't get a library in, into our schools? It's nuts. And fighting against that is one of the main things that I want to do.
Thank you. Martine?
I want to thank everyone for, for coming tonight, by the way, and, and listening to us. And why did I decide to, to put my name again after, I think my daughter says, only four years? I think it's because I think finally began to see the, the full potential in regards to working with my colleagues on the board. And, and more, I think, you know, I, my contribution, I think, in that process to be able to then look at, how do we bring out all those voices together? And how do we continue to build momentum in regards to addressing issues of equity? And how do we be, be able to also be, provide a space for those voices that we hardly ever hear from and continue to then really deliver on a quality education for all children? Not those children that only, you know, have parents that, that have already 100 books in their, in their, in their library, but those parents that only have one book in their library at home.
Give these candidates a round of applause. Thank you to the organizers, the folks... Thank you to the, the organizers, the folks that worked on this. Thanks to the PTAs and thanks to all of you for your time this evening. Good luck on your boat and get home safe.